Start this meeting and the regular school, the regular board meeting of the Nampa School District. And we will start by doing a pledge of allegiance.
Hi, pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
We got quite the crowd tonight.
All right, so well, welcome guests. Here's one that just walked in, brought lunch, dinner for everybody. And then we will, I do want to recognize, first of all, Dr. Russell is absent tonight. He's been excused for a family thing that he's going to and welcome Mr. Yarborough. It's not Dr. Yarborough.
No, no.
Two more days.
It'll probably Dr. Yarborough at least twice tonight.
I've been called worse.
But we appreciate Mr. Yarborough stepping in and filling in for Greg. And we will now do the mission statement, our mission and vision statement. So we'll start with the mission, which is
The mission of the Nampa School District is to ensure high levels of achievement for every student.
And the vision is
Every student is fully engaged in extraordinary learning experiences, preparing for successful transitions to the next stage of life.
All right. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Motion moved.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Okay, do we have trustee Benz online? Okay. And before I move to that, I do want to, we'll excuse trustee Taylor also. She had some other stuff that she had to get done tonight. And we have trustee Benz on the phone that'll help us move into executive session. So I'll entertain a motion.
Chair, I move that we move into executive session per Idaho Code 742061B and D, B to consider the evaluation dismissal or disciplining of or to hear complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent, or public school student, and D to consider the records that are exempt from disclosure as provided in chapter one, title 74 of Idaho Code.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to move into executive session.
Trustee Jennings.
Trustee Barron.
Trustee Ben.
Okay, we'll be in executive session until six o'clock. We'll be back. So I'll give you about 10 minutes to finish your dinner, okay? Let's wait 10 seconds and we'll be right on time. We are back in a regular session. We'll go to our next item on the agenda, which is public comments. And we'll start first with trustee comments or any updates you would like to share. Trustee Benz, we'll start down at this end.
Not tonight, thanks.
Okay, we'll start down at this end. Oh, you just don't have anything. Trustee Barron.
Last week I visited Union and Lone Star and Nampa High. It was good, good visit.
Good deal.
It's good to get out to the, to the schools. So we've got another three scheduled in a couple of weeks.
All right, I don't have, was gonna say something, but I'm not going to. So I'm gonna just move on over to
I'm good too.
All right. Yeah, very good. Okay, we're gonna move on to public comments and Earl Lamont's gonna see if anyone signed up. No one signed up. Okay, I'm gonna open it up to the two, two people in the room that aren't staff. And if you wanna, if you guys have anything you want to say, any public comments, you're more than welcome. Okay. All right, then. We will then move on to the next item, which is a consent agenda. A move that we approve the consent agenda. Okay, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor? That motion passes and moving on to action items. We will start with Mr. Yarborough. We'll start with letter A.
Chair Kirkman, trustees, before you tonight for is policy 3010, which there are some adaptations to our open enrollment policy, given some work with ISBA and some, some code changes. Mr. Stoffer's gonna come and explain a little bit deeper on that, but before you, you should have it in the board packet, so.
Chair Kirkman, board of trustees, just wanted to do a little bit of clerical work before we talk about the policy. If you noticed in the packet, there are two different drafts of the policy 3010. This is strictly as we were transitioning to Symbly. This won't be how it looks in the future. The first document is how we used to do it underneath the old Board Docs framework, where we'd have a document that would have the information and then we'd work off of that, that stagnant document. In Symbly, we have the ability to do it and navigate with inside the system. So the second one that you see underneath policies is the same document as the other one, but it's the Symbly version of it. So we wanted to make sure we had both of those, as this was a new adjustment for us moving to the new platform. In the newer one underneath policies where it says under 3010, you'll notice that the subtractions are in red and the additions are in green. Here's an example of it in front of you. In the other document, it's just a red line document where the red without any strike through is the addition and the, the red with strike through is a subtraction. So they're the same document, just a different format as we, as we transition fully to Symbly. Just wanted to make sure we clarified that before we moved forward. And as Mr. Yarborough mentioned, in the open enrollment policy, this is policy 3010, the differences that we have in here, the, the request that we have of the board to look at this through a first read is really due to the new languages of law. We just updated this policy in two different sections. One was to look at the exclusions for open enrollment. It is directly copied from state code. The second part is underneath the transportation, which is also from state code. Those are the two differences in this policy. And with that, we're more than willing to answer any questions after you have a chance to look at it.
Yeah, Mr. Stoffer, in the, I'm looking at the Symbly version here and the green one in the green one.
The green lines.
Yeah, the green lines, page two, the first green section there.
Yes.
I know you take, you took this straight from the code.
Correct.
So I'm gonna ask you to interpret what the legislature's intent was.
That's a dangerous situation for both of us. I think that's, really what it's trying to do right here is if there are particular things that have occurred that are not disclosed by the guardian or the parent in the open enrollment process, those are the, the pieces, the criminal offenses that are found in the different chapters. These are significant behaviors and significant occurrences that have happened legally and have been found guilty of
adjudicated to the, to the end.
To the end.
So my question then is, and that last sentence there, and a failure to disclose will result in a denial. Is there no wiggle room there? It's just an automatic denial?
Correct.
Is there room for an appeal? After that's been denied at that point?
I think that's something we probably want to get some more legal advice on. The way that it is interpreted, again, it's a very solid statement. That would be our first leaning.
It's a will, not a may.
It is not a may. It is a will. And so when we get into the legal side of things, that word will is really the key component to that. So again, without having the, the legal consultation with it, it is our understanding that it means it will be denied. There isn't an appeal process for it.
So one of those bridges we'll cross and we
Correct.
Chair Kirkman, Mr. Stoffer, if I may, the one thing that goes along with that is that the due process would still be there. So again, they may file an appeal, but the way that code looks, and again, Mr. Stoffer's correct, we need legal. But the way that code reads on that, the board would totally have the right to not, to deny even hearing the appeal according to what we see there. Again, need legal advice on that, but that's, that's code language, so.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, and I think that's the same question I would have through a lot of that. Again, you know, the legislature provides so much explanation on this. Okay, that's all I had on that. This is first reading, right?
Correct. This, this, this is the first read for this particular policy.
Oh, trustee Ben, sorry.
I just have a logistical question for the transportation portion of things. I completely understand that we need to make accommodations for students on IEPs. But with the way that the state has broadened open enrollment, we have the potential, not that this is practical, but could happen, who knows, right? For someone, say, in Kuna, a student in Kuna who says, hey, I really want to go to Nampa School District. I'm on this IEP that requires these special accommodations. The program that I need is not offered in my school district. I'd like to take advantage of this open enrollment. Practically, what would that look like?
Trustee Kirkman and trustee Benz, I think one of the things we'd have to look into again is this is an IEP. And so there's gonna be an individualized team that would have to look at that IEP. There's other components to that as well as we go and we look at the, the, the components of accepting an open enrollment. If we do not have seats available, then we would not be able to entertain that open enrollment. So I think we'd have to go through the process and see where we are. Also, including the IEP team would have to meet and visit and determine the appropriate allocations because it is based off that IEP. So it's really hard to have a generic and broad answer for it because of the special education piece to it. But it's definitely one of those things that we're gonna have to look at as open enrollment has been broadened. We are definitely gonna have opportunities to, to look at this and also follow our policy as it's been outlined by state code.
Thank you.
But could, could a student in another district with an IEP, could the IEP, IEP be considered as part of whether or not to deny that open enrollment?
Chair Kirkman, and I know that Mr. Yarborough wants to ask this answer as well. So I, I, I'll take a little bit of piece of that and he can add to it as well. The answer is we always take IEPs into consideration because of the personalized nature of them. We have to look at him and see what is in it, what's in the best interest of the student to make sure that we are evaluating that correctly. There, there's also components that we need to look at as well as if it's a particular program, like I mentioned. If it's a program that we do not have any space for, then we, our first, our first order of business is to take care of the people in our community in our district. That, that's the nature of the law. If there's openings with or without, does not matter. That's the first thing that we have to consider is do our, are our programs, using that term, are they full? And from speaking right now, our programs are pretty dang full.
Chair Kirkman, trustees, yes, Mr. Stoffer hit the nail on the head. I do think there's a, a component of a special education student, we cannot deny them open enrollment because they have an IEP. That is, we can't discriminate. However, we have multiple times when we don't have services in our district or have other districts that we work out, contracts and MOUs with that district. For example, some iterations of our deaf and hard of hearing programs where we contract with other districts to meet that need. So from just an open enrollment standpoint, that wouldn't be something necessary there that would be very much tied to the program and needs that student. And we work with the local district who, for lack of a better term, owns that student and we work out what those, those things look like, so.
Okay, great. That's all the questions I had. Any trustees, any other questions? Okay, it's an action item. I'll take, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the board approves the first read of the revised policy 3010, open enrollment.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded, all in favor? Okay, it's been motioned and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye, that passes, thank you. Uh, Mr. Yarborough, letter B.
Next up, uh, Chair Kirkman is a policy thirty five twenty five, which is on immunization requirements. Again, uh, Mr. Stoffer's gonna help with this, some changes that are very much tied to Idaho law. We have consulted, um, our nursing coordinator, Rebecca Burley, who helps us with all these. Uh, Mr. Stoffer can fill you in a little bit deeper, but this is a first read of that as well.
Chair Kirkman, I, I, again, this is just a, an update due to Idaho code. Uh, so these are just, uh, in, in this past year, as we've seen some legislation passed through, we needed to update some of our policies. This is another one that falls within side of those parameters. Uh, you'll look at it originally, it said, um, in the first paragraph, the Board of Health and Welfare. That is no longer the case, it is Idaho code that these, that the immunization components are put in and we're just updating it to match the code.
Okay, next, next sentence there, parent or legal guardian, so legal guardian is parent guardian of the child, right?
Chair Kirkman, that is correct. You'll notice that throughout the document, that was one of the nuances that we looked at it too and we said, oh, that's a little strange, but it is, uh, directly again correlated to Idaho code that it, it specifically talks about parent and guardian. They took out the word legal.
Weird. Yeah. That's the only, oh, and then there's. I promised I wasn't gonna be verbose tonight, but and, you know, listening to, uh, a lot of what's going on in the federal government when it comes to immunizations, I would imagine we might be seeing this policy again very soon down the road. I'll just leave it at that. Any, uh, questions, trustees? Okay, I'll entertain a motion, is this first read again too on this one?
I move that the board approve the first read of the revised policy three five two five immunization requirement.
Second.
Okay, it's my motion and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes for the first read. And the last action item, Mr., I almost said, Dr. Mr. Yarborough.
Chair Kirkman, trustees, uh, before tonight, we're gonna have, uh, Ms. Adiselli Gomez, our Director of Curriculum Instruction, come and, uh, talk on two different curriculum adoptions that we have going on, um, particularly a secondary math curriculum and then some elementary science curricular resources. Um, she has provided you with some documents and insight there and can walk you through what we're looking, uh, like on those two adoptions, so.
Good, Mr. Adiselli, how are you? Sorry.
Now, wait a second for Tyler to pull up the PowerPoint.
Always waiting on Tyler.
Okay, we're good to go. So, this evening, there's the action item to open up two committees. Uh, and keep in mind, we're still working on gradient and we'll bring a recommendation to the board next month. Uh, but for high school math, I wrote secondary math, but really we're looking at high school at this time. So we're looking to adopt a new curriculum for high school math courses and some of it's dependent on what happens with gradient. If that one is, if illustrative math isn't approved by this committee, then this committee would be, um, this math committee would be adopting integrated one, two, and three materials along with a financial algebra, algebra course. Um, and we intend to, to adopt these materials for eight years. And then it was brought to our attention last week, so this is why this is in green, that our policy states that we don't adopt for dual credit and AP courses because they're dictated by the colleges, but a teacher brought it up to our attention that, that that's not the case, that, uh, we submit our syllabi to the colleges and then we list the resource, we pay for the resource. And so, uh, it's green because we're, uh, adding that part into here, that we are going to adopt materials for our dual credit and AP courses. And all of those courses use, uh, resource that comes from precalculus, calculus, statistics, um, or computer science. So that, it's, it's kind of expanding what we're looking at, but it's all within high school math.
So up until now, I always was under the assumption too that we didn't approve, so all of a sudden.
Chair Kirkman, uh, trustees, here, here's what happens, um, in different contents, there are kind of some different rules in playing with the, um, colleges. What we do know is that the colleges still actually approve the adopted curriculum. Where it gets sticky and, and the reason we went this route for the board to consider is the colleges in different subject matters for, um, the decade plus had paid for those resources, they no longer do. So the district is actually purchasing the resource. We felt that was appropriate for the district to consider, if we're gonna do that, then it needs to go through this process rather than leaving it solely to the colleges and the instructor. With the, the, um, reality of this being, um, high school mathematics and upper division high school mathematics, we aren't aware of anything that will become very controversial in the adoption of these resources, but we did feel it was important for the committee to go up through those to give the board an appropriate recommendation.
Sir, are we still pretty sure that the colleges will accept our coursework?
We, Chair Kirkman, we, we feel very confident on that. We have longstanding dual credit relationships and, and, um, with our AP courses as well. Uh, we, we feel very confident in that. What has happened is again, that the universities, rather than giving us the course and the resource, are saying, come through us, but we'll approve what you want, Teacher X, who is technically, i- i- and that's why, again, we wanted to bring it to the board, we didn't want there to be ambiguity of our teachers are selecting resources, the parents don't know about, the committee doesn't know about, and, and just going through the college alone, we wanted to make sure that that was clear for.
But I would just hate for them to, for students to take these dual credit AP courses and then get to college and say, nope, sorry, that's not, we're not.
We'll be ahead of the ballgame on that, that they will know that, and that's why we're going through this, that those, those are agreements will be in place before they go through the class. So what has been already adopted and worked out with, um, those folks, um, we will, we will continue that until we come up with a new adoption, then go from that. Perfect.
And I think it'll be important too, when we go through the process, to reach out to them, you know, is this a, a book you would approve or not? So we know ahead of time. So the rationale for high school math is that our current curriculum resources were adopted in spring of twenty seventeen. We're currently in our ninth year of implementation, the standards have been updated and, um, since that time. Um, there are some digital licensing considerations, we will, uh, we can continue to renew, but we are paid up through, uh, spring of twenty twenty six. And just so you know, we will survey the community and NSD staff to get some input. And then the other part of the input would be to work with our, um, college and university partners as well. So for that committee, we would like to have, uh, ten members, five district representatives and five parent community representatives. And I don't know if we want to do the action item for, um, approving this at the end or after each one.
They're separate committees, right?
They'll be separate committees.
I think we do, I think we just do, let's do this committee and then that'll be done and out of the way and then we can do the second one. But a quick question, so you have, we already have a committee for, that we just approved, correct? And then we're gonna have this one if approved, and then we may have a third one if approved. Are we spreading teachers and patrons too thin on these committees?
Chair Kirkman, trust, trustees, that is a great question and we've had, um, some very, uh, we've had conversations about that internally. The issue is what we're actually adopting and what we're bringing before you. The committee that is currently ongoing that you have approved is to look at gradient and the open resource, education resources that are through that platform, much like our, uh, adopted high school ELA. And that conversation is a little bit different, um, than just, hey, here, we're open up for all these different resources. We wanna determine that flexibility and whether or not the board chooses to go down that route. So that one's a little bit unique. What we do know as well is based off of that, this math piece, where there are courses that are not in gradient, specifically these upper division courses and financial, uh, and our financial, uh, algebra, is that correct? That are not there that we will need to adopt for as well. So again, running those together, we feel is really prudent. We have not extended that we're, we're taking too many folks and getting them in ways that are going to be like a full curriculum cycle, if you will, that is, is very, very in depth. It's the limited number of courses rather than an entire, um, scope, uh, or sequence of studies, what we're looking at.
You think that's gonna be a little bit more palatable than?
We, we hope so, and that is why we're bringing it to the board. Um, and, and again, the grading conversation, I think, is really important for the board to consider. If that is the method that we're going down, we need to definitely make sure we're vetting those courses and, and we can do that in a different way than adopting each subject area, going through an entire, um, adoption cycle that way.
Trustee Benz?
And, and then, uh, so I wanna make sure that I am not misunderstanding what you had just mentioned a little while ago. I thought, and like I said, I may, may have misunderstood, that this was a backup committee in case the gradient committee says, on the map that's in there, right? So this committee is dependent, is wholly dependent on the success of adoption for gradient math. And then if it's adopted, the only piece that this new committee would need to tackle would be the upper division advanced placement and dual credit, correct?
And financial.
And financial apps, the stuff that gradient doesn't cover. But if gradient isn't adopted, then we need them to do it all.
Yes.
And so does it make sense to approve this committee while the gradient committee is still in limbo?
Yes, because this one will have to be formed anyways. And so, um, if illustrative isn't approved, we'll look at financial algebra and the dual credit courses. If it's not approved, then we'll look at integrated one, two, three resource and then these ones also. But the integrated one, two, and three, they use the same text, so it's not like three different texts.
Okay, and so what are you envisioning as the timeline for this committee? So if they're gonna be working in parallel with the gradient committee in terms of timeline, is it gonna throw a monkey wrench in the whole thing if they both are like, okay, and we're done? Well, no, this committee's not, because we rejected gradient, does that make sense?
Yes, so in October, I will come to the board with, uh, with the committee's recommendation for illustrative. And then on that night, that's when we will approve the math committee. And that second, this math, high school math committee that we're talking about right now, won't start meeting until November.
Awesome, thank you.
And then just to answer, um, Chair Kirkman's question about the community, that kind of remains to be seen how many applicants we get. Uh, but the teachers, the staff, it's, it's different teachers. So it's our lower division math class, um, teachers right now and then our dual credit teachers that aren't a part of that committee and then our econ. And so it's all just different, different, uh, groups we're pulling from for our, our education side.
Are you using a Gantt chart to keep all the timelines?
I have this really big calendar in my office and we write everything up there to keep it. My staff, I worry about that, just glad I'm stretching them a little bit.
There you go.
Yeah, we're.
Okay, so is this all the information for this particular committee then, or we can, let's take action on this particular committee and then we'll move to.
So I do have one question. So last meeting, we approved, I believe it was twenty members for the gradient committee. In the event that these folks have to adopt a new curriculum, if gradient, let's go through, is ten enough?
Yes, I talked with our secondary math specialist, uh, about that and we feel like it should be sufficient.
Chair Kirkman.
It'd be five and five though, right?
Yes.
Chair Kirkman, um, Trustee Jennings, the reason that we have twenty is there's multiple other subject areas, so it's spread out with this being mathematics, it would, would be much more contained. And again, speaking with our math specialists, it, it narrows that number down.
Said you're not gonna find that many people who know math anyways, so.
Especially at the higher level.
Especially at the higher level, yeah. Financial algebra, okay. Someone have a motion for this particular committee, secondary math curriculum?
So I move that we open the secondary math, secondary math adoption committee.
Is that the?
I, I, I would recommend possibly reading the, um, sample motion in the actual packet, not.
In the, in the board notes?
Yes.
I have it, but does that cover this, both this and what is coming next?
Yeah, yes, but she wants only the math one and then the next one.
There's two, there's two memos, or one specific.
It's not the memo, it's in the meat of the.
Yeah, so the recommendation part?
Yes.
Okay, so.
It's different than the one that was in the memo.
Okay.
Move that the committee application.
But since you started, don't you have to, do you have to finish?
No, I don't think.
Okay.
Okay. I do have.
Okay.
Thank you.
I move that the, uh, let's see, I move that the committee application process begin as outlined in policy twenty five twenty to approve the secondary, a secondary math curriculum.
Second.
Hey, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries.
All right, so we will talk about our elementary science resource. And so we are planning to adopt a new curriculum resource for elementary science case three. It'll be available to grades four or five, but they already have a curriculum that was built out in previous years. Um, we intend to use these adopted materials for eight years. The rationale is that the current curriculum resources were adopted prior to the twenty five, or excuse me, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year, there was a tech glitch. We keep really, um, thorough records on my team and, um, some of those records were lost with the tech glitch and so we're not actually sure when that was adopted. Um, it's very, very old though and it's not aligned to the new NGS standards. And so, um, we are in need of a new resource for elementary science. It's outdated and it's been used for at least more than ten years. Um, the state revised Idaho content science standards in twenty twenty two, there aren't any digital license, uh, considerations. I think something to note about this is that we're calling it a curriculum resource adoption rather than a comprehensive, which is a more full adoption because we feel like our ELA and math resources that we have right now have a lot of science resources within them. Our math has a lot of STEM resources within them. And so this would be to kind of help supplement what we already have in being taught because in elementary, they focus a lot on ELA and math. Um, and so this would help give some science experiments and some, um, just different content if they need to, to pull for that. So it's a smaller adoption also.
Um, the Idaho content science standards, how, how much of a revision was that? Was it pretty significant?
I think it was pretty significant, yes, in the way that we teach science. It, nationally, they went to the NGS, uh, standards, NGS standards, and so it changed a lot.
And Idaho followed suit?
Yes.
Was any of that changed because of what happened during the COVID years? Do you know?
I don't think so, I don't think it was related to that.
Okay.
Chair Kirkman, trustees, what we know of is no, um, and I'm gonna be bringing in some graduation requirements stuff to you guys in future board meetings and the same thing, I talked with the, um, state, uh, a, a state representative today on the NGSS standards and no, to my knowledge, there wasn't anything that changed with that, so. But your point about what's happening politically, maybe that will change again.
I'm telling you, who knows, who knows what tomorrow's gonna bring up? I just, I, I, I guess just in my little pea brain thinking is how much does science change where those content standards change that much? I mean, it's science to science, right? Oh, Trustee Benz is fighting at the, she's chomping at the bit.
The standards don't necessarily change the science behind it, but it's the way that the science is taught. So the order that the concepts are presented.
Important to, I think that's important.
Yeah, so the, the order that the concepts are presented, the, the focus on whether is this physical or theoretical, what kinds of materials are appropriate, that type of thing, it changes. And very often, it's how are we teaching scientific thinking? So how are we approaching this whole method of presenting this information to the kids?
I think it's a great question because sometimes we get that question about like, how much does math change? Why do we need a new math resource? But it comes back to how are we teaching that? Like, we know that it's important to teach math conceptually and perceptually and so we wanna have a resource that helps support that instruction for teachers.
Well, when that word content is in there, that's exactly what people think, is they're like, well, wait a second. Two plus two still equals four, so what content are we now changing to where we're, we're teaching different math? I, yeah, so that, that's why I brought that up, I was just wondering how, how, to what significance do those standards have changed, but thank you, uh, Trustee Benz.
Is there any other questions about what this resource might look like? It will likely be a digital resource, um, rather than, like I said, not a comprehensive where we have a textbook. Yeah. Okay. So this committee will also be ten, uh, members, five district representatives and, um, five. Did I write that right? Yes, five parent community members. And it will be shorter because it's not going to be like, like looking at multiple, like we did with math. Math in the LA, those were like four to five month adoptions. Um, and just to answer other question too, like with gradient, because we're not looking at multiple resources, we're looking at the suitability of the resources that are being proposed. Uh, we're doing that in about five weeks, they meet every week, so it is a little bit intense, but.
Will this one start in November also?
This one will also start in November. And they will take place on the same night here at the district office, just in different rooms, to kind of help streamline that a little bit for our staff.
All right, any other questions, trustees? Okay, whoever's got the motion, I'll entertain it.
I'm, you go ahead. Go ahead. I move that the committee application process begin as outlined in policy twenty twenty, sorry, twenty five twenty to approve an elementary science curricular resource.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed on that one? Okay, thank you very much.
Sorry, I have a, I do have a timeline slide, if you could pull that up Tyler, just so you can kind of see, since that was one of the questions that we had.
It's not your Gantt chart, is it? It's not your Gantt chart, is it?
Next slide, I think. There you go. So in September, we are, um, we're beginning that process for the committees. In October, the committees will be selected. You'll receive an email and we'll have, I'll differentiate for you. These are the math applicants and these are the science applicants. Um, and then we'll come to the board in October to approve those committees. And that, on that night, I put that in yellow side, remember, uh, we'll make the recommendation to the board about the gradient curriculum adoption. And just to give you a quick update on that, it's going really well. We have such great community members and great staff members that are here and, and doing the work. And, um, a lot of them want to keep coming back and working with us. I kind of joked about, you know, Leslie, she's on our second one with us. And, um, just, it's just really great to engage with the community and the teachers and, and look at, uh, the content together. So we'll bring that forward. Um, just a quick note there, we discovered in the process, there's not a US history resource. And so we'll, because gradient doesn't have one, but they're piloting one, and so we may have to come back later for that one. And there also isn't a physical science course in there. And so Mr. Yarborough and I have been kind of talking about what we'll, what we'll do with that. And so if, if that does, just doesn't work out, then we will adopt separately for those areas that we are short on. But we currently have resources for them that are paid through like 2026 or 2027, so we're okay. Um, in November, the committees will meet, December, uh, November and December, the committees will meet. And then in January, we, January, yeah, we'll come, uh, back to the board with our recommendations for math and science. And just to note, uh, in terms of planning ahead, if we do have to look at integrated one, two, and three, um, it may not be until March because that'll be more resources to look at. So that's the timeline.
So make a quick comment. I'm going to put you, you don't have to answer this if you don't feel comfortable answering it because Mr. Stoffer's here and Mr. Yarborough's here too. But it seems like with all these committees and all this work going on, the overriding curriculum would be that gradient. That would be kind of all encompassing, which I, I, I've seen at work at Columbia, and I think it's fantastic. I really do personally. I think that's a, that's a great s- system to go to, if you will. Is, is that kind of where the, the administration, the, the district would like to move to, as to something to that?
So Chair Kirkman, trustees, uh, I, I don't think.
Uh, that's probably a loaded question.
It's, it's not loaded. I, I don't think that we have necessarily, uh, a motive to say, here's where we need to go. I think there are a lot of considerations, including financial, including what we've seen from a student success perspective, and then looking at what's happening in the future with curriculum resources and the cost of that. I think it's really good for us to go through a committee adoption process and put it in front of our community to understand that, to balance with the financial considerations that will come up. Um, I also think it's important for our particularly high school staff to see where this is and how it might work for them. But it, it isn't perfect either. There are some pieces that gradient doesn't have that we'll have to supplement. So I think it's a, a good step. If that's where the board chooses to go, we just want to be able to have really good information and make a solid recommendation based off of vetting things rather than just, well, it's.
So the question is probably premature then. Probably looking for an answer is probably premature.
Possibly, but I, I will tell you, we are not opposed to going down that road if, if the committee process leads to that. That, that's why we're looking into it. Would that make the most sense for us to bring that recommendation to the board to consider?
And I really, I, you know, I, again, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm talking a lot here, but this curriculum is so important, obviously. It's so important because that's what we do in schools, but there's, gradient seems to be really heavy focused on screen, on this, on the laptop, on the phone, whatever, on screen time. Is, are we moving away from books and those types of, of resources? And, and moving our kids more and more towards screen time? Because I don't know that that's necessarily a.
Yeah, so gradient has evolved from Summit, uh, which Columbia was in that longstanding relationship with. And I think one of the big criticisms, criticisms of that was that kids were on screens a lot. And so gradient has, um, like I said, evolved to where, uh, they're shifting their focus away from that. So there is a lot that they do submit online, um, just like they would for college classes.
Which is important, yeah, I mean, you gotta have that.
But they're focused more on instruction and utilizing these curriculum resources. And, um, I think I showed this before, that the OERs that we're looking at, they already are, are free, right? And, uh, the platform is provided by gradient, but gradient also does a lot with professional development and helping to support leaders and teachers, uh, on instruction. Uh, so that's the shift that I've seen. And, and when I've talked about it, that's the reason we would want to go with gradient is to help improve our instruction.
Chair Kirkman, trustees, to that point, um, Ms. Gomez and I, Mr. Laboue, we, we went to Houston this, um, summer to a gradient training. And it was a very specific part of the, the conversation and, and development of what are you doing in the classroom, in the human interaction space to get kids hooked and engaged in learning? And then how are you leveraging the tool of the resources that are on the devices and how to use and when to use the device? There was a lot more of human interaction discussion that way.
And that's what I saw.
Very much so.
Yes. Columbia, so, okay.
They're headed that way for sure.
Okay, good. Any other questions, trustees?
I have a quick.
Trustee Ben.
So if they are piloting a US history curriculum right now, do they have the government component at the end? They just didn't have the, okay.
Yeah, so part of their vetting process, uh, when they were considering OERs to include within their platform was to go out and vet different OERs. And none of the US history courses, when they were ready to make this transition, met their standards. And so they're currently piloting one and they went, tell me what it was, because I was kind of just curious, they're gonna, uh, they're gonna announce that in January, what that history course will be.
Okay.
And if they don't, if it doesn't meet their standards and they won't go that way, and so we'll continue to use our US history course and then build that into the Canvas platform.
Thank you.
Very good. All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Gomez. Appreciate it. All right, we will move on to information items and reports. Mr. Yarborough.
I believe, uh, item A, I believe is Ms. Lamont has some information for us about, uh, the trustee election in November. Is that correct?
Uh, we do. I think, um, we, last month, we talked about, um, this superintendent Russell led the conversation, letting you know the timelines along with, um, the date of everything needs to be submitted as of August 29th. Uh, this update is just, we have received the candidates for each zone, uh, trustee. So three has one candidate, trustee Behrens. Uh, zone four has two candidates. That's, um, and that's, zone five also has two candidates. So we're just letting you know the timeline and the eligibility requirements.
But all the timelines are passed now.
Correct. And the, um, election will be handled by the Canyon County.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Yarborough. I'll just, you can just run through those if you want and we'll interrupt you when we need to.
So Chair Kirkman and trustees, next is, um, someone used to run high schools tonight. We have, um, Principal Skyview High School, Mr. Dave Young, um, with us. He's going to explain what that implementation has looked like. If you'll recall, we've moved to a cell phone policy. We've had a lot of conversations over the last six or eight months of what cell phones look like within our, uh, learning environments. Um, our middle schools were maybe a little ahead of the game. They, they started some things a couple of years ago. And we brought some stuff to the high schools here this last year and they've been working on implementing it. We thought it would be a good update for, um, someone whose boots on the ground to come and share what it looks like. Um, and we appreciate all their work. I, I will be the first to say I've been in the high schools. Kids are still kids and they're, they're going to try to hide a bone for sure. But, um, we've seen, I've seen personally a lot of drastic shift in what maybe was the, the norm to now, but would like to have Mr. Young give his perspective and open up to questions for you.
Mr. Young. Trustee Kirkman, uh, Chair Kirkman, trustees, thanks for having me tonight. Just like what Wayland said, Mr. Yarborough, it's a lot better. Uh, we're still improving. We're getting there. You know, just kids are kids, adults are adults. We're working on, uh, changing habits still. But as you walk through a building at any given point in time, I would say, you know, like 95% of it, it's there. Kids still in the hallway off and on, you know, they'll have their cell phone out. It's kind of a habit. We've been educating for the first few weeks. We're really, really close. Uh, at Skyview in particular, we do confiscate cell phones in the hallway, you know, any given day, we might confiscate 10, maybe 15. In the classrooms, we ask our teachers to start each period and just say, hey, as a reminder, you know, especially first period and coming out of lunch fifth period. Hey, just as a reminder, put your cell phones away, put your earbuds away. Probably one of the biggest hurdles still is changing the habits of when people are bored. You know, think of what we all do, because we're all guilty of it, right? When you're bored, you're waiting for your spouse, your friend to come out from an appointment, you've got a free 10 minutes. What do you do? You get on your cell phone, right? And it's, it's kind of amazing because the middle schools have been doing a very good job and had the policy for quite some time. But how quickly kids learn those habits, you know, because of what everybody does in society and in their own free time. And so, um, we've had, uh, visitors, you know, the last week or two pop into our building. We do a lot of visits into our own classrooms. I visit with my security team, uh, once a week and we just ask about, how's it going? Our, our job's not to, uh, just discipline and, and scare every single kid. You know, at Skyview High School, we've done a lot of work educating, uh, you know, trying to teach new habits. And even if it's a one-off, we'll stop and talk to a kid and say, hey, you know, we're a no cellphone school district. And if a kid's ho, uh, in the middle of business or something, we might ask them to hurry, maybe even step into the security office or the front office and finish their business, step outside and then continue about their way. We try not to really, um, uh, tackle bad relationships, I guess, you know, and, and do things like that with our kids until we have to. You know, if, if, if we have a chronic child, a chronic student who's just all the time, we handle those. As you go into the classroom, uh, Mr. Stoffer was with myself, uh, last week, we went into a math room. And there were a couple of kids on cell phones. And as soon as we walked in, one kid was like, hey, I'm using my calculator. Not a lot. We have a few of our, uh, foreign language, our Spanish speakers, that sometimes we have to ask them. It's like, hey, take out your cell phone so we can translate and just communicate back and forth. But I would say overall, it's much, much better. Teachers have talked about students being more engaged, more productivity in the classroom. Um, unfortunately, you know, some people, you always have some intentional non-learners, you know, some that just maybe aren't as motivated. And they're still looking for ways to entertain themselves or just, you know, I was a math teacher, not everybody likes math. And, you know, there's times where some are still trying to find avenues and ways. We have kids that are still sneaky. Um, they go to the bathroom and in the bathroom, uh, they're on their cell phone. You know, and so we do walk in and, uh, try to get them back to class as quick as possible. Just like you guys have your devices up, kids will have their devices up in the classroom and their cell phone right behind the screen. And teachers won't always see that, you know, because they're in the front or they're navigating and moving around. So there's some old, um, obstacles that we used to tackle 10 and 15 years ago as a teacher. You know, that as we went to just kind of a free pass, they've come back. And we're able to handle the one-offs a lot better and a lot more often. So overall, it's going well and definitely a lot better than what has been the last couple of years.
Thank you. A couple of questions. One, what about your staff? Do staff, is there anything with staff about having their cell phones out all the time and, and?
So it's not like a actual policy for the adults. We try to model good behaviors, right? So again, as we were doing our walkthroughs, um, especially during prep, you know, teacher's going to be on, just like a child might be during open period. And just like myself, I went and bought myself a $40, uh, smartwatch because I don't, I didn't want to wear a watch. But now with our policy, I try to model for kids. I try not to have my cell phone out at all, except for at lunch or if I'm in my office. And so if I get a call from Mr. Laboue or somebody else, you know, my watch will buzz and I know it's important.
But it would be a good excuse not to answer that phone call though from Mr. Laboue.
I, I, I do that periodically also. I mean, my wife is probably not watching this, you know, so I, I'm, I'm safe there too. But, but, um, adults, we, we are trying to model, you know, and, and, and just like, I think probably everybody here has their cell phone on their desktop. That's kind of what most adults do. Um, I would dare say, you know, 99% of the time, you're not going to walk into a classroom and just see an adult surfing through their phone, right? Now, is there a cell phone on the top? I mean, do they grab it? Quick communication, maybe, uh, coach to coach or, uh, maybe even adult to their spouse. I think you still have some of those one-offs.
And my other question was, are there any incentives that are being used for the students to stay off their phones? Is there anything like that that's might be in play at this point right now or?
I would say no. I mean, I think we're just. And, you know, I kind of grew up old school. My dad told me I'd do a lot of things because it was good for me, right? Not because he wasn't going to pay me for grades and do a lot of those type of things. And just creating habits and understanding the why behind things, you know, we spent probably the first two weeks in my building, educating our kids during the wind period about our policies and procedures and the why behind the cell phone. And getting kids to understand that while you're here interacting with people, interact with people, you might not get to do that as much as when you go home. You know, you might have chores, you might be babysitting. Your friends just might not be able to leave the house as much as you do. And so I do think the interactions have gone up. They're still kids, you know, I, I, I had an interaction with a kid in the hallway last week. He had his cell phone taken away and he was a little upset because he was texting his sister about bringing his lunch, right? So we had a conversation about that and he was still kind of upset about it. And I had to remind him, I said, well, honestly, it's a little bit like parenting. And when you're in my building, I become your parent while you're here at school and there's certain things that you have to do because it's to a degree, what's best for you. And even though the kid, um, was looking for his lunch, I asked him, I'm like, well, how did you handle that with your teacher? You know, did we just kind of have a bad interaction? Did you tell the teacher, hey, I was just trying to track down my lunch? Because if you communicate well, the teachers, the adults will, will work with you. And that's one thing I think we're still trying to do as a whole is understand some of those just communication pieces. You know, it's not a free pass just to do whatever you want.
I think more and more students are, are coming to the realization that, you know, these, these dang phones are, are not that healthy.
They are addicted.
I, I think that more and more, slowly but surely, I think they're starting to realize that.
I, I'm, I'm guilty of wash, watching a bunch of fishing reels on my phone, right? Wayne Fish, he cooks a lot of catfish and whatever down in Texas, and I swear, I'll watch one and next thing I know, I've watched 10 and it's been 30 minutes.
Weird that you're going to watch fishing reels like that.
Everybody's entertained, right?
That's true.
Uh, what other questions do you have for?
Yeah, any other questions, trustees, trustees? I think that's great. And thank you for the insight. I think that's very appropriate insight of what's going on. And I'm sure that it's echoed in, in the other high schools too, to the.
We do, we do feel like Columbia is a little bit further ahead because they actually started the policy, uh, I think third trimester last year. Like I elected not to, I don't like to do many things right in the middle of the school year. You know, we wanted to start fresh and so as Corey Wilson, who and I have conversations back and forth, a lot of the stories I share with him, he's like, yeah, that's kind of where I was last year during third trimester and it's a little cleaner. It's not perfect, but it's a little cleaner for him and his building is what he's told me.
But it's better for him to go through all that mess too and you learn from that.
Absolutely.
The way around, right? Well, thank you so much. I appreciate your time. Any other final questions or comments?
No.
All right.
Okay, thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
All right, Chair Kirkman, uh, next is our, a transportation update and followed by a facilities update. Both of those are going to be handled by Mr. Stoffer, so, um, he'll give some information.
Chair Taylor, or excuse me, Chair Kirkman, I know you call me doctor, I just changed it, sorry. We'll get there. Routines, you just talked about routines and breaking routines, right? Just wanted to come before you again and just, uh, ha- have a quick, uh, update on transportation. Again, our report that we had last month, it's very similar this month. We are, we are experiencing what we consider to be traditional transportation, uh, things that we are working on. But by far and large, the system is up and moving. We are, uh, also wanted to report on our RFID cards for the secondaries. They have been ordered, uh, for print. We should have them here within the next week. Depending on when we get them, we'll be working on our rollout. Our target of the first week of October is, um, still very viable. We might even be able to beat it, but, uh, we still are on, on track for our rollout at the beginning of October.
Questions, trustees? I'm, I'm amazed at how little I have heard about the transportation issue. I mean, amazed but not amazed. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Okay, um, facilities.
Yep. Sorry. Chair Kirkman, again, uh, as we're trying to ease into a newer, um, updating format, I've included PDFs for the board to look at it, just things that we're doing on a day-to-day basis with our facilities. These are some of the bigger projects that we put in there that we have been attending to, other than our day-to-day efforts of, of just maintaining it and fixing. We also, just as far as an update, we are looking at, uh, a couple of bigger projects that might be coming to the board depending upon, uh, what we find. One of them has to do with some HVAC at Columbia, just because of the, the size of it. We may need to bring the board in for a potential RFP at this point in time. That is, uh, something that we're still exploring, but there is some, some mechanical components just because of the dollar amount. It may come to the, the board's, um, attention. We'll keep you updated on that. Uh, we're still, we're working on it as we speak right now. And with that, um, any questions on facilities?
Yeah, carpet and flooring, it says executive building.
Yes.
Upstairs, is that this building?
No. I'll clarify that a little bit more. The, the executive building is the nutrition, uh, center. Part of our contract, we are to supply office space for, um, our, our ABM services, and that is the upstairs of the nutrition building. They actually paid for it, so it was not a cost to the district. I, I worked with them and, uh, they were, they covered the costs of re-carpeting that, uh, upstairs building.
All right, that makes more sense. Any other questions, trustees? Thank you.
Chair Kirkman, before you now. Chair Kirkman, before you now is the enrollment and our average daily attendance, uh, the enrollment report. Um, we are looking at, uh, very similar numbers to where we thought we were tracking. Um, we did have noticed a bit of a dip in attendance this year, um, just a percentage point or two. We are working on that and have talked with our buildings about, uh, bumping that back up and then seeing what's, that could be a part of that is the, the weeks that are and, and where they get to, we are a week ahead. We're a week behind, if you will, because we started, uh, school a week earlier. So where we were and then that transition does go typically down, we start to see that, uh, dip a little bit. We are still well above ninety percent for average daily attendance. Again, um, very high in our elementaries and then that, um, high nineties, so, excuse me, high eighties to low nineties for our secondary schools, which is pretty typical. Questions on?
Did you have something to add?
It's a good transition.
Oh, okay.
E N F into the, the similar conversation because they lead into each other so well.
Yep.
So, but again, if there's any questions for, for Mr. Yarborough.
And if Mr. Stopper's gonna give us where we think we're headed, um, from an enrollment projections update, working with, um, H P M, so our, our partners as well, and he's got a presentation to show what this, what it may look like over the next few years, so.
Okay.
And Chair Kirkman, Board of Trustees, um, if you recall, uh, Superintendent Russell, Dr. Russell mentioned that we'd be exploring a, a new report that we have used extensively through, in the district for the last few years, working on our projections of what our student base and populations might be. Uh, our previous one held really true, but we were getting towards the end of that projection. It was starting to, um, fall, and I won't want to say fall apart, but the data now had changed so much, it was difficult to project too far out. So we worked with H P M, which was our partners from previously that had done the work and had done a good, good job and really kept us in line with a lot of projections. Uh, to give you this, uh, new projections that we have for the upcoming years, again, this is more information for the board in the background as we look at, uh, bigger decisions, um, projecting for future years and so forth. Um, the first slide I have, I think is, is one that is, um, has some, um, I, I think the word hope is not the right word, but I'm gonna use the word hope and, and, and looking forward to a stabilizing our projections as far as student enrollment. We have seen that dip or that trend for the ma- the last few years, we've been watching our numbers, um, trickle down a little bit. This year, we had more of a stabilization, which, um, consequently is in line with what this report gave us as well. We were almost spot on with, with the report, they, the part that they recommended for us. But the reason I bring this up is the birth rate. Um, we had a, a, a lot of years in Nampa that the live birth rate in Nampa had gone more stagnant, even though we had increased in size and volume in our city. Our live birth rates for our younger children, we weren't seeing some of those being born in the city. If you notice the last two years, that number, last three years, that number has started to creep up again. Those indicators are important for us because that gives us a good idea of when we can expect these students into our kindergarten classes. It's a huge indicator for us to be able to project in future years. So as we see that number go up, there is, there, I, again, I use the word hope or the anticipation that we might start seeing some more kids trickle into our schools in a few years. Um, so this one is a, a, uh, I just get a graph that, um, we wanted to just have at the forefront of your attention as we look at the rest of it.
It seems like we want to increase our population, our student population, we just need another COVID lockdown, right?
There you go. Please, let's not do that.
Let's, let's find another way.
Let's find another way. But again, these numbers do give us some basis to start looking at. The next slides that it will kind of go through, I'm not gonna spend a ton of time on all of them. There's a lot of math behind this. Again, this is more informational for the board to look at. We have, and I, I know that you've heard from Randy a lot about survival cohort ratios. Uh, this is the, 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 um, the information on how they gather that based off of, um, all the data that they collected. So these are the ratios that we use for, from one year to the next year. These are how many students we retain from one grade level to go to the next grade level. And we have that broken down by grade bands there. The next, a few slides are just gonna talk about our historical data, which we're, we're very much aware of. Um, again, just a part of the presentation and we have it included in the documents, so people can see that trend and you can see that trend of where we're at. And now comes into the projections. They have a low projection, they have a moderate, and I'll have you kind of scroll through, and then they have a recommended, uh, projection, then they have a high projection. If you look at the recommended projection, if you look at that first column, that is for this year, and you look at the very bottom K twelve, you're gonna see twelve, four oh nine, twelve thousand four hundred nine. That's right about where we are at. And if you include in our preschool students, which is that E E K twelve, that's early education. That's our next lick students that are, um, enrolled in that preschool program. That is, we're within a few of, of hitting that number right now. So again, their projections for us were in line with what we received. If you'll notice in this projection, again, it's a projection. We'll see a potential drop for the next couple of years, but then you see that we start gaining numbers again after that. All that again is based off of movement in the growth of our city, that live birth rate. Um, they analyzed and we have a really deep analysis of, uh, even the types of, um, communities that are, are being built and that people are moving into. We've done analysis of each one of those types of communities with inside our district boundaries that are the backbone of all these numbers. So again, a really thorough, uh, projection analysis that was done. Uh, so the initial part for the board to, for, that we wanted to present is we're, we're hitting what they projected us to do yet again, which is, is a good thing as we start to look forward and projecting for next year's budgets and so forth. Um, but we'll, we imagine that this will be some data that, uh, we'll use like we have in the past for future, um, projects and for future knowledge.
Still, over the next ten years, increasing only three hundred students?
The good news, I think, again, to look on that flip side is, is that we're not in that reduction mode that we have been in the last four or five years. It stabilizes. And that's, that's what's healthy to a system is when we're stabilizing, not continuously cutting and trimming and trimming and trimming.
All right.
Fascinating. Lots of fun. If you, if you get geeked out on the numbers like I do, this stuff is really fascinating. I get excited about it, as you probably can tell.
And then as you, as you start to analyze it, that's.
Asking more questions.
I hear where you're coming from.
So again, this was just more informational. There's no, uh, other action items. We're more than welcome to have more conversation added as we have future, uh, work sessions. This might be a component that we can back, bring back and reference. And, and as I mentioned, there's some components in there where we get really into the weeds of, of, of where the students are coming from and those population areas. Really fascinating. Just one, um, overall, uh, knowledge point that is, we have new homes being built in our, our zone, and this is not just Napa. These are specific to our zone and to our, our district. We have a point three four, um, addition. So that's a point three four of a student, if you can imagine that. There's no such thing. But point three four students are per each household built or each household occupied in, in our boundaries. So in our whole system, that's not a particular grade level. It's K twelve. We get about point three students for every house occupied in our boundaries.
Yeah, um, and it takes five to ten years to build out those.
Correct.
Neighborhoods, those homes.
Yeah.
And Validview, I mean, I was just, uh, our last planning and zoning meeting and Validview is just there, they don't know what to do. There's so many in that district that's being built. And my first thought was, I, I don't know if it's feasible. I've brought this up before, but would, nah, nevermind. It's, it's, it's a topic for a different discussion.
Chair Kirkman, trustees, in conversations with Validview even this year, they, they are up students again, but they are not up as many as they thought. So again, that, that's a piece of this conversation is these are projections, but they are projections given the best data we have. And we'll navigate as we have from year to year based off of the other factors that come up. But even, uh, even schools like that, most of the districts around our valley saw again a slight reduction as we did. But they're seeing a slowing in the reduction. So we're actually, um, we're, we're a few kids up from what our projection was, but we still saw a loss of enrollment. So again, that, but leveling off, we're getting closer to, are, are we actually at, at the floor, if you will, where we can start to see where that goes.
And does this, the, so H P M is H P M, right? H P M, do we contract with them? It's, or?
Chair Kirkman, yes. And this, this project in particular, we just contracted for this, uh, analysis that they did. So yes, this was.
And does that include the, like, special education students also? Is it just that K through twelve and everybody?
It's anybody that enters our door regardless of whether they're special education or other alternative program.
Does it go into the deep, does it go into the weeds a little bit more of that demographic and?
There, there is a little bit on, on that, but it's harder to predict the amount of special ed students. We, what we do know is that number is increasing every year. So it's kind of the opposite of enrollment. We're seeing more and more.
But it's hard to project with that.
Correct.
Cause I mean, how do you know?
So, so that part is not a specific line item is part of this analysis. Um, but we can use our, our percentages that we have seen, the growth that we have seen to kind of look at that. Now, again, one thing we have not seen is we have not seen that percentage go down. Uh, and nor do we project that it will go down.
Well, then just based on historical data, we know that it's gonna be increasing. We just don't know how much. Any questions for Mr. Stopper?
Yes. Um, so a lot of this data is somewhat relevant to the funding that we receive from the state. When the state implements their new funding policy, is there gonna be as much relevance to it going away from the ADA?
Chair Kirkman and, uh, Trustee Jennings, the, the answer is it, it's all encompassing still. Uh, when you look at the, the way the new formulas will go, and, and again, there's, there's talk that there's gonna be a, a proposed new formula this year. So I think that's one of the things we have to be just cautious about. Every year, the funding formulas are up for change. But one thing that's consistent is looking at how many students are gonna be in your building. That will always drive in some shape or form the amount of funding that we receive. And so it's always important for us to be navigating that because it also helps us dictate how many teachers for classrooms. It helps us dictate, uh, when we look at that, um, connections to our levees, like the one we're currently running, we're looking at all those numbers to be able to help us to make the best decisions or present the best information we can to the board, and the board has the best information to make decisions based off of it. So it's the, the, the short answer is, I think it will still help us.
Well, you can make an easy pivot if that ever did. You said when, I'm gonna say if.
Yeah. Use it loosely.
Um, but I'll, I'll get to you in just a second. So any other questions for Mr. Stopper? Okay, we're gonna jump right into financial treasury report, if you don't mind, Mr. Yarborough, just right ahead of you.
Because we're going. Well, it's worth that because I actually had something to say on this as well. The one thing that we don't know how this is gonna affect us is the vouchers. So the funding mechanism, that, that is what it is. We, we deal with that every teen, single year, right? But the vouchers, we don't actually know. If you look at other states where that's actually really proliferated, it has decimated a lot of districts. And so we don't know what it's gonna do to Idaho. We don't know what expansion they might do. I don't see it going smaller. I only see it growing bigger and the more and more money that goes into it is less money that's gonna come to us. And the way they look at it, they're gonna project and say they're not taking any money from us. But what they are projecting is less kids in the district, which any additional money goes out to the others. So if there was a billion dollars in our budget, let's say, they're gonna keep it at a billion, but we're gonna get eighty percent in the twenty percent and then we'll get seventy-five in the twenty-five percent. You see what I'm saying? So that's exactly what happens in other districts and other states. Right now, Arizona has a bunch of people going after it to stop the bleeding per se, but it, it is happening all over the nation.
It's already happening now because the governor ordered a three percent holdback. And that's in direct result of some of this funding to the voucher system.
Well, actually, the three percent holdback is a result of less money in the sales tax. So there, there's a slowdown of our economy right now because of many different things.
But the need to fund and pay for the new voucher system that's going into effect is.
That's one component. Yeah, I think there's only forty million, fifty million.
The point is that we can see that happening already.
It's, and it's, in, in general, our, our state revenues, what happened with the state this year, if you look, remember, they, they couldn't, um, finalize revenue forecasts for months. Usually that's the first thing they do in J, uh, J F A C. And the difference, the Senate and the House wanted different revenue fact, uh, calculations because at that point in time, if they anticipated more revenue, they could give a bigger tax break. And it was all political on that side. And I think they chose the bigger one, assuming so they could give the big tax break when the moderate one, which is what most people wanted them to go with, which is what we usually do as a state, generally came in about what we anticipated with, was the moderate revenue forecast. And so now everybody's gotta be cut associated. We got lucky this year. Uh, the problem is, is they're still gonna want us to do it next year. They're just gonna do it in a different way.
Well, this is not the time or the place to get political, but.
Yeah, I've tried not to. I'm trying to be good, but in, in, in reality, the situation, and we're, and our state department is already kind of front loading us as well. Um, even our superintendent, uh, their budget proposal, if you look, the only thing that they actually asked more of, which the governor actually specifically said not to ask for, um, but we did ask more fifty million dollars more as a state, uh, to go into special ed. They, they didn't ask more for, uh, discretionary again. They didn't ask more for, other than the regular teacher salary associated with the career ladder. Um, and if we do get another discretionary increase similar to what we had this year, that's gonna dramatically hurt our, our chances to stay afloat in the future without big cuts in other areas.
Said, where are we at now with that? We still, we're still good though.
Um, yes, uh, right now, we're, we're, we're doing well in our budget and I'll, I'll go through that with my financial report if you're okay with that.
You're up.
All right, you wanna go to the next with?
I was just trying to make that segue.
I know, you, you were just that, your preamble or whatever it's spelled in the book. All right, you wanna go to the next one? All right. So yes, um, our, our unit calculations are not available until December. It's the craziest thing. We have to wait for a while to, to understand that. We, we, we've done it long enough. I mean, obviously we know kind of where our numbers are gonna be. With our enrollments that are here, um, it does look good for us. Our enrollments came in higher than what we anticipated. Um, but the problem is on the flip side, our ADA seems a little lower, one or two, and, and, and Wayland talked about that a little bit as well is, uh, um, just trying to figure out where that happy medium is. And then the other side, remember, is our teacher, um, side for average pay. So you, we really, um, those, those teacher numbers are due October fifteenth. Our other ones aren't due until the end of November. Cause remember, it's the first day of school to the first Friday in November, then we try to clean everything up. But I think we're anticipating a little higher in ADA than, in, in unit count than what we had projected originally. I projected almost a hundred and seventy-five to two hundred kid loss. And I think we're down only what, fifty, I think is what we anticipated.
A little more than that, but no.
Yeah, not much more. But the reality is, remember when we came into this world too, into this month, I mean, this year, we anticipated having to hit fund balance quite a bit in order to just make revenue. So this additional revenue, hopefully it will just kind of make it so we don't have to hit that as much, but we, that, we are far from knowing that one just yet. All right, you wanna go to the next one? All right, let's go into prior year. Uh, we're in the middle of the audit. We're in second week, which is nice. Um, majority of everything's done. They're just kind of doing some of the outlining stuff. Um, we shouldn't have any issues right now. They haven't found anything material, um, which is good. I don't like it when they find anything. Last year we did and we knew what it was and we couldn't do anything about it because it was, you know, it was a bill that came in late from one of our vendors. This year, I promise you, we've not done that. We have nothing that hits. I, I, I threatened, I think, uh, maintenance and Courtney and those guys, if they had any bills that did come in late, then I would cut off their funding and they, they did a good job getting us all their money in.
Does that include the, the bus?
Yep, yeah, the additional money that, uh, the bus come, we had accrued that as well. And actually, we've paid that bill as well. So everything is, and at this point in time.
Coming in late and.
We have, uh, we are working on that. That is, uh, one thing Courtney, uh, Mr. Software is working on right now is, um, making sure those come in a little bit more timely as part of our contract negotiations, you know, contract came in and stuff. That is a, that's a big part of making sure, because that's a huge bill. When you're talking eight million dollars in contract, we kind of want to know where we're at on that one, not coming in in July. Yeah, that, that made, that one hurt a little bit to make sure at the end of the year to, to get some big bills like that, but it is what it is. We, we kind of knew they were coming. It was just a matter of trying to figure out where we were.
Something that would show up in the financial audit is what I'm asking is the, the late bills and not getting those paid.
The financial audit only cares about your, like, your year-end numbers. It doesn't care about budget per se, doesn't care about any of that kind of stuff. Now, if we were extremely, there is a, a, there is a document in there. It's a budget actual for our general fund that is in there. Um, it does show and I have to acknowledge what's way over budget, what's not, but other than that, they don't particularly look and say, hey, your vendors are terrible or you got these in late or they, they basically, they, they don't care about the management side of thing. They just look at the numbers to make sure they adhere to GAAP, basically, generally accepted accounting principles. So we, we should have that report, um, no later than next month, um, is kind of where we're at. Um, and, um, yeah, so the only thing that could hurt us right now, uh, the single audit, which is directly associated with our federal audits, this is nothing associated with us because our stuff's good to go. But, um, there's a thing that's called a compliance supplement that tells our auditors what to test each year. Normally that thing is out months ago, so this time they're doing their six thirty audits, they know exactly what should be tested on every single one of these audits on these, uh, federal, um, grants that we get tested and we just kind of move on. Um, as you might imagine, there are some things happening in Department of Education and Department of Things, and this is for all, not even just Department of Education, just across the federal government and what they're doing. And O M B has, has been saying for months that these compliance supplements are out to, to be done soon and they're still not there. The problem is now our grants have been around forever, so they basically, you just never know. Uh, and they shouldn't change much from testing from year to year, and that's why our auditors feel pretty comfortable. But once in a while, they'll flip in and they'll do the special provision, the special test that you just don't know that they needed to do. And And if they give us an opinion on that audit, then at that point in time, they have to come back and redo and then reissue that opinion. So that's kind of painful. So there might be an actual separate report that I'll bring to you after the fact. It doesn't do anything to us. Our main report will be into the state on time. This is just the federal side of things that we're kind of at mercy of the federal government to give that some of those testing procedures. Yes.
So when typically is the actual audit due to the federal government? And what happens if they don't give you the tests before the deadline?
That's a great question. So our audit audit is due 120 days after year end. Okay, generally, the single audit that is due no more than nine months after year end. It's it's kind of a whole the whole process there. And and so but I mean, we can only do what we we can do. And truly, all it really does is if we could bring in late, it just makes us a not no longer a low risk audit T, which means they have to test a little bit more instead of doing a 25% test. I think they have to do a 50% of the the grants test and everything. And with our grants, it's two or three odd, three of the grants, and you've pretty much tested 80% of our grants. So it's not that big of a deal for us. So but it wouldn't be our fault anyway. So at this point in time, our orders are pretty much done with the stuff that they they know and what they've done in the years past. I literally think it's the same procedures when I used to audit districts back 10 years ago. So there's nothing much of change about it. A few things. So they know they're very familiar. They're very high end on government audits. It's just we got to wait for that in order to get done. The big question I have for you is normally we do have the orders come for the to present, and I'm assuming you guys want that as well. If that's the case, then I'll need to get that on the agenda for next month to have the auditors give give them a little bit of time to come and present.
Yeah, I think we've done that in the past, have the auditors coming.
Yeah. Man, it'll be perfect. So it doesn't really matter. I mean, it'll be fine.
So confident.
I know. Well, I I hope to be anyway.
Well, this is a good area to be confident in.
Yes, yes. Well, I mean, this just solidifies the the ability to know that what I've been telling you all year is basically what's happened, right? And so our numbers are generally really clean. I've got a great staff that has been with us for many years, one of which has decided to, she wants to retire this year, which is really a bummer. But after 28 years of being here, so that'll be a tough one. But we'll we'll find somebody good and we'll keep going from there. One of the things we wanted to talk about that superintendent wanted me to talk to you guys about about the current tax levy. And one of the things, and I know some of you are trying to talk about it, but remember when we had talked about what we anticipated was $6.5 million last, it was what we got last year for House Bill 292 money that basically went towards in the past went directly against bonds. Remember, this year it's going 100% against our supplemental levy. Okay. Well, there was a change. This was the first year in the calculation to ink include in the calculation money from sales tax, online sales tax. In the past, that was never on there. And it was a considerable increase to us increase. And at first, they didn't think it was going to be as much. And we got some word that it did and they messed up on the calculation and it even came back and gave us even more. And so when it was all said and done, you'll see we actually received 10.8 million. And so that's a lot of money. So if you look at it, I mean, last year, we levied on our patrons $9.3 million, 67 cents per $1,000. Okay. This year, we're only going to do 4.5 million. It's a $5 million decrease. So if you think about that and the property tax increases, which are usually eight to 10%. Anybody that comes to us and says that our our we are, you know, you know, killing them and making them, you know, that we're having so many taxes that you can't handle it, they don't quite understand taxes at this point in time because we are probably going to be the lowest that we've ever been. I anticipate us being under 40 cents, 30 cents.
Just going to ask, we're 67 cents now.
Yeah, yeah. And even with, I mean, if we go to the next slide. And even with the next time supplemental levy considerations that we've had, we're still going to be considerable. And remember, when that one hits in two years, we'll have two years of property tax valuation increases as well. So this 44 cents is based on 24s, you know, year of taxation.
25 cents at that point.
That's that's kind of the goal, right? I mean, our whole plan here is to try to reduce this as much as possible. And then the one thing that people and I have always have to reiterate to people is we're always levering a dollar amount. We're never levying a rate. Okay. And what a lot of people think is, oh, you're going to, all these new subdivisions are just making us a lot of new money. It doesn't bring us anything more. All it truly does is lower everybody else's taxes around us. So when these big Amazons come in with these big businesses, unfortunately, most of the big warehouses now are going into Valley View property. But we're still getting some. You start seeing the same fill of a lot of different things. A lot of subdivisions are bringing in money and those are four, $500,000 houses rough that. And so that is just going to raise our property values. And it's going to lower what we're our cost is per patron. So it's a good thing. And it sounds like a lot, maybe I'm not a people, a couple of people, $32 million. Are you kidding me? And it's like, yeah, but we're getting almost 11 million over back each year, you know, so it's quite a bit.
And I look at it as a return on investment. I mean, when you're 44 cents, your return on investment is what we're getting for that 44 cents.
Yes.
You you can't find that anywhere else. And if it goes even lower than that, the next two years or so, I mean, it would be it would not. Yeah, I just, I think that's a great ROI.
I mean, put in perspective, when I first got here, we're, I think, for $4.20 per thousand.
It's it's almost it's almost unbelievable.
I know. I know.
And there's so many factors that are that that, you know, all of that, the growth, all that kind of stuff. There's so many factors.
Yes. So so it's a it's a great thing for us. I I will say if the supplemental levy doesn't pass, then 100% of that $10 million, $11 million goes towards pro like similar to our 521 monies. It is then restricted money going to only towards maintenance and op and none of it can go towards operations. So it's really kind of a bummer if we don't get it because then at that point in time, it's we do have a lot of things necessary in that. So don't get me wrong, but it really hurts us in an area where we need operational funding. We don't need, we've already got that other money for other things that we're trying to do with that money as well.
That's a key piece of information that the public doesn't always understand is how restricted that money is if
Yep.
That kind of thing.
Yeah.
We can't touch it for anything else except for that, which is why the supplemental levy gives us
Yep.
Some flexibility to use where we need to use it.
Yeah. And and a $6 million supplemental levy at our size of our city is, I mean, you guys can see it's just ridiculously small. So it that's that's kind of the the beauty of it right now. So I think that's the last slide I have, right?
First one.
And that's it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it.
On that note, if I might ask Mr. Yarborough, as far as information on the levy, I know you are getting some final pieces of information here together. Do we have an anticipated?
We we do. I'll let Mr. Stoffer speak to that. His communications team, we we have we we have kind of a timeline to to get some information out, but we will have that and have that ready to go. And we do want to use utilize our buildings. That's a big piece because they have the closest connection with our patrons and and connect in there. And that is our platform we've used. And so that's what we'll go ahead.
Chair Kirkman, board of trustees, we are getting into that timeframe where you're going to start seeing some more. First thing is going to be our website will be going live next week. There'll be some components that were will be working with this weekend that will start to appear. So so it will be there. But the 20th is our launch date for, and here's our timeline that we have put together for our staff. So we're just looking at, again, our our web version is getting updated. We have different communication cycles that we'll be putting in, moving information out and getting into people's hands. So this is just our rough draft that we have put together. We proposed this to our cabinet and we've shared this a little bit with our administrators that this is when they could start expecting some of the information. Can we we share it with you as well, just to kind of get a rough estimate when those will come out? There's a little bit of flexibility on the days, just when they when they land, just based off of when we get information back. But that this is our our levy timeline for distribution of information.
Will you have a presence like at first Thursday and down at Saturdays?
Yes, one of the one of the things
Farmers market, that kind of stuff.
Yes, one of the things that we are actually going to do, I've talked to Dr. Russell about this is we're we're going to have some open donut meetings for him to to be present at and sir staff to be at to come and visit. We have a lot of those types of things that will be done and be handling as well. A lot of them you're going to see throughout the month of October. There will be some things that will be pushing out in September. Again, from having put these informational's out, you tend to get more investment during the October timeframe. And so that's we'll be leading up to it for all of October. And then the first week of November is the election.
Good. Questions, trustees? Any of that? All right. Thank you. Good information. Mr. Yarborough?
Well, Chair Kirkman, I believe we're past our time. So I'm two, two things something to board on. I will go quickly. Number one is the Communities for Youth survey that we we are going to give to our students some grade seven through 12 that have opted in. If you remember back last spring, we had an organization Communities for Youth come out from Boise State. There are research group that is approved by the State Department of Education as well. Superintendent Kritschfield has pushed out a letter saying this survey is really valuable. It helps districts get information to really help leverage our communities and how we support our students. Again, the the point isn't to gather information to say schools now you need to do this. It's to use schools as an access point to get information to share with community bases, including our faith organizations in in Nampa, our Impact Healthy Nampus, or Mayor's Office, other city entities, other medical entities, St. Luke's, St. Al's, Southwest District Health, to look at what are the actual issues that are impacting our youth? And then to leverage our community to support those. The update tonight is that we are going to be implementing that survey. For those that signed up, it was a consent within our registration packet for grade seven through 12. There was a glitch. We usually will do it grade six through 12, but we didn't have the sixth graders in this year. So that will be implemented in grade implemented, excuse me, in grade seven through 12. Next week, we we have that set up. I spoke with our secondary leaders today. And again, if students did not opt in to take that, they won't be. We have a list of that and sharing that with folks. It's about a 30 to 45 minute survey. So there's about 45 questions. It probably will go a little quicker because it's some ranking skills for some students, but that will be in. We vetted those questions based off of what they have. They have a whole bank of questions. We stayed away from anything that would be controversial. And in fact, in this year, we had suggested to identify students based on biological sex. And there was a gender question that we took out. And so we won't have that disaggregated down for this year. We it will just be our entire seventh through 12. The students that have signed consent, we will in the future because there's some research protocols they have to use with their research entity to change in those questions. So but we feel like this is going to be a really good first step. Huge shout out to our registrars, our schools for doing this through the through the registration piece, particularly Caitlin Morris helped us build that. She's one of our folks on the backside that does a lot of things and helped us build this. It was easy to get to that 60% number. Remember, we tried it in the spring and just getting consent, we weren't there. But that 60% number was easily attainable in in all our schools. And we'll be implementing that next week. Once we get that data back, there will be some community shared nights. We'll bring that data back to the board as well. But that's our next step on Communities for you. And then to to wrap up our highlight reliability schools work, you guys, some of you have had the chance to meet with Dr. Mario Acosta. He was here a couple of years ago and we had a board meeting that he came in and met that trustee Jennings, I think that was right when you were coming on. And he came back and did a keynote for our staff this year at the opening, right before school opened and did a phenomenal job. He's recently written a book on school culture and how that impacts initiatives and and actions within the school community are really, really beneficial. He came and gave that really good, a powerful address. And then you, we had our entire certified staff and some of our classified folks chose to come as well, was a really dynamic presentation. And he's if you haven't had a chance, when we have him in, meet with him, he he's he's very dynamic, very knowledgeable, still has had enough boots on the ground and has done some amazing things in schools. So he gets and can speak on a variety of level, variety of levels all the way up to board members, down to the classroom teacher and and that that whole gamut of our hierarchy. So really did a great job there. And in fact, this last week, he came back and did some work with this that we we contracted with him through a couple of times through the year. He came in and did some specific work with our middle schools, went to their sites and met with them and the leadership teams talking about particular middle school math and what we can leverage there, seeing a lot of possibilities and things going on there with his support and seeing a lot of hard work from our buildings and administrators and and instructional coaches and teachers. And then he did some things within our cabinet and curriculum instruction that we normally do have some check-ins and things with him. So really, really beneficial. The the focus of this point was really level two, which level two in HRS is really about improving instruction in every classroom every day. And so we're really looking into each school and the model instruction that they have. And then auditing that against a tool that is called the New Art and Science of Teaching is a model for a lot of other schools and things out there, but really working honoring the work that our folks have done and auditing against that to see how they're performing and how they're working to raise instruction in every classroom every day. So really, really good pieces. And he'll be back again in December if if you're interested in wanting to see him, but he'll be around then. So.
He didn't mention NSD in his book, did he?
He did. We actually have we we don't sadly. And we did have one of our schools, I believe it was a Whitey Elementary, had a principal and and student, or he used to be a teacher reference my name and some things are doing there. So yeah, we we are on his radar.
Good start. All right. Is that all? That's all you got?
That's all we have unless you have other questions for us.
Trustees, is there anything else? Before we adjourn? All right. This meeting is adjourned.